Good evening and welcome to the October 3, 2012, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first thing on the agenda for tonight is the consent agenda. We have one mandatory referral for our drainage easement located on Lot 9 of the Green Valley subdivision along Pine Court. Freddie Bailey is the applicant. Is there anybody on the Planning Commission, anybody on the staff, or anybody in tonight's audience that'd like this item removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, I'll declare it approved as submitted. We have six public hearings scheduled for this evening. We're going to change the order slightly from what was on the agenda. We had a request to accommodate somebody on that, so we tried to do that when possible. We're going to move Items B and C to the first two public hearings, then we'll go back and pick up Item A. So right on into Item B. It's an annexation request for approximately, for the annexation of approximately 12.3 acres along Highway 231 North, Lebanon Highway at Cherry Lane. Mr. Jerry Alsop is the applicant. Ms. Healy, good evening.
Thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is to consider the annexation of two parcels that are located along the western side of Lebanon Highway, Highway 231. The property, the two parcels are located on the corner of Cherry Lane and Lebanon Highway, and they're the properties shaded orange on the maps on the screen. The properties are approximately 12.3 acres and does include the right-of-way of Highway 231 that is contiguous with these properties. Properties are owned by Mr. Jerry Alsop, who has requested the annexation of his property. It is contiguous with current city limits along the southern property line. The properties are also within the city's urban growth boundary. The southern parcel of the two is within Murfreesboro Electric Department service area, and the northern parcel, the one that is sort of awkwardly shaped, is within Middleton City Electric Membership Service area. Although sewer is available, it's somewhat limited in capacity to these properties. You do have in your information before you a plan of services outlining what services the city can provide and a timeframe for those services. This property would be relatively easy to annex. If you have any questions about the plan of services or the request, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but you should conduct a public hearing before formulating a recommendation regarding the annexation of this property to City Council.
Okay. Is there a representative of the developer here that would like to speak?
I don't think so. Well, okay, there.
Mr. Huddleston, do you have anything?
Way in the back. Mr. Bill Huddleston works for the applicant. He's representing him.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Jerry Alsop, who is the property owner. He is in attendance tonight. We would like to ask at this time if you would recommend zoning, excuse me, annexation of this property to the City Council that is contiguous with the city limits and services can be provided. We have met with the Water and Sewer Department and do have a plan for searing this property as well.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Huddleston? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before we open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. When we open the public hearing, we'll ask anybody that'd like to come forward and speak either for or against the proposal. Please, when you come to the microphone, state your name and give your address if you would. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes. We have quite a few people here that might like to speak tonight in one of the, either this or one of the subsequent public hearings, so please be aware that we are observing our three-minute time limit. Make all your questions, if you have any, to the Planning Commission and all your comments to the Planning Commission. If you do have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions and attempt to answer them at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, now let me remind everybody, this is the first of two public hearings pertaining to this property, to the same property. This first one is for the annexation only. We're not talking about zoning. We're talking about just annexation into the corporate city limits of the city of Murfreesboro. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that
Yes, sir. I'm Jim Ridley. I live at 4431 Lebanon Road, and I wanted to speak to you on behalf of the annexation. It doesn't seem like it would be a very good idea to take it into the city because of several problems with it. Some of the land is below the highway level. There is a huge sewer line across it that goes from the landfill to the city so that they may treat the leaf shapes. It's something like three or four feet across. It's a very, very large thing, and as far as I know, I don't imagine it can be paved over. I don't know what can be done with it. The land in question loops around behind my backyard, which does not access anything except Mr. Alsop's land. It's sort of isolated back there behind my backyard. The land is also within three feet of a very historic building on my property that belonged to a doctor during the Civil War. It's only three feet from that property line. In the back, it is also very close to a smokehouse that is part of the historic property. When you consider the zoning, I've got many more things to say about the zoning, but those are just the only reasons that I thought maybe the property should not be in the city. And I thank you for letting me speak, and you'll hear from me more later.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley.
I'm Dickon Kidwell. I'm an attorney here for Mr. Ridley. And from what I can understand about your procedure here, if you annex this, you're trying to also annex it as commercial property area. And if you look at the information that you sent out, or somebody from this organization sent out, you are going, not quite surround him with commercial property. He has a residence out there. It is a historical landmark, and there are other residences all in that vicinity. This has been preserved as a residence, a historical residence. And it would seem as though, as far as commercial businesses, there are plenty available there on the Lebanon Highway already. It's difficult to see at this time why an annexation would be necessary. I would also like to point out that this board, or commission, Mr. Ridley, myself, 10, 15 years from now, when somebody's trying to do something about this, nobody will remember what we've done here. And I know we can have assurances that, oh, it's going to be wonderful property, a commercial property, but we all have seen worse things happen after you've got it annexed or zoned. And Mr. Ridley has worked with this property for, I think, around 50 years. He's trying to preserve it for his family. He's trying to preserve it as a historical landmark, and I'd like for you to consider that. It's difficult to see the need of the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidwell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's George Erdell. I live at 3940 Cider Drive, about a mile in from this property along Cherry Lane. And I must side with the last two gentlemen that just spoke. Having had experience with this body before, about eight years ago, we were given all kind of assurances when Mr. Wall wanted to annex in the new neighborhood at the end of our street. We were assured by Mr. Wall and Mr. Adalot that that new street, new subdivision would not tie in to our established, longtime community until they had at least, the term was, at least 80 percent of build in that new community. You can go back and check your minutes. That was assured by Mr. Adalot because he had the agreement with Mr. Wall, and I want to tell you, they're nowhere near 80 percent now, but they've been tied in for over five years. It's messed up our neighborhood. It's messed up the values of our homes. We've got traffic now on our street that is like the Indianapolis Raceway. We've put in stop signs. People from the new neighborhood ignore our stop signs. So whatever you guys promise tonight, I guarantee you that in a matter of 12 months, these gentlemen are going to feel like they've been adalotted, just like Cherry Lane Acres has felt like they've been adalotted. You know, your intentions may be good, gentlemen, but I'm going to tell you right now, your word ain't worth a paper it's written on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erdell.
David, my name is Joseph Haas. I live at 1133 Bramble Trail. I'm a neighbor of Mr. Erdell's in the same subdivision. I had not really planned on speaking here tonight. I just wanted to show up and support Mr. Ridley. I also would like to say that Mr. Erdell was pretty much truthful in everything he said about what's happened to us in our subdivision. I moved out here in 1994 to get away from this type of activity in Nashville, and it seems like it's following me all the way out here, even where we've moved and lived and loved the neighborhood for all these many years. So just like for all of you to carefully consider the annexation and the process down the road of the zoning and what kind of properties you allow there. It is right across the street from the Seagull Soccer Park. A lot of children play there. I do appreciate the park. I do, I have enjoyed it myself since we moved there. I also want to say that I appreciate Mr. Adalot taking time out of his day today to talk to me on the phone. He's probably spent a good 15, 20 minutes explaining to me the process and what was going on here. He was very helpful and informative and patient, and I appreciate that. And I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Last call. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adalot, do you have some comments on some of the questions or some of the accusations that were made?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to respond to the accusations because I consider the source of at least one of them. But I will, I want to talk about the sewer line. Mr. Ridley discussed the sewer line across the front. That is a very large line. It is actually a tight line. It is the line that serves the BFI landfill or the Waste Management landfill. To my knowledge, there is an easement across the property. It does not prohibit driveways or parking lots across the front. It can be paved over to, to the best of my knowledge. And then that's very typical of sewer lines and tight lines. I'm not sure I heard any other questions. If you have a specific one you'd like me to respond to, I'd be glad to see if you can jog my mind, my memory.
No, I don't have one on here for you. Not a question. Any questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission? Once again, I want to remind everybody, this is for the annexation only pertaining to annexing this property into the corporate city limits of the city of Murfreesboro.
Mr. Lamb, I have a question from Mr. Adalot.
Yes, sir.
What's our plan for Cherry Lane and moving it over to, what's our plan for Cherry Lane?
It is eventually, Cherry Lane will be extended as a four- or five-lane street all the way over to 840 when we receive approval for a interchange on 840. Until that approval is granted, it's, we're not going to be trying to finish up the design of the road or construction because the location of the road is going to be dependent upon the location of the interchange. And Mr. Richson, our transportation director, is actively working on getting that nailed down.
Okay, if we, we have no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick comment and a motion. It has been a while since we've done many annexations and zonings, and it's not been our routine lately, but I do believe that normally, you know, if the property owner wants their property annexed into the city, that, and we can annex it, it has all the, the services are available that it needs. I believe I should make a motion to annex this property into the city as requested.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to the second public hearing. The zoning request for approximately 10.64 acres to be zoned commercial highway simultaneous with annexation along Highway 231 North, Lebanon Highway at Cherry Lane. Mr. Jerry Alsop is the applicant. Ms. Healy?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for the same property we just considered as the previous subject item. There are two parcels, and they are located along the western side of Lebanon Highway, Highway 231. The acreage for this rezoning is 10.64 acres. That's a little bit less than it was included in the annexation, and the reason for the difference is because the zoning application does not include the right-of-way. We don't zone rights-of-way. So this 10.64 acres includes just the two properties that Mr. Jerry Alsop, Alsop has requested annexation and zoning for. The property is, of course, contiguous with current city limits along the southern property line. The properties to the south are Zoned P, and that's for parks, and that is, of course, within Murfreesboro city limits. The properties to the north, east, and west are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, and the majority of these parcels are zoned R15, which is very similar to the city's RS15 zone. The applicant has requested, and that simultaneous with his annexation request, that you consider zoning these properties to CH, Highway Commercial District. The applicant has in mind property will be redeveloped into commercial uses that he views as appropriate for the intersection of a state highway and city major street. Due to the size of the lot and location of the structure, it appears that it's possible for property and structures to be converted to commercial use without requiring variances for such requirements, such as setbacks, parking, parking ratios and standards, and landscaping that we require in our ordinance for CH zoned properties. So this public hearing is to consider the zoning change, which Mr. Alsop has requested, to simultaneously zone the property CH with the annexation. Again, the property is the orange area shaded on the map that was just on the screen and in your agenda materials. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Ms. Healy?
Thank you Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. We are here tonight to also ask for zoning of this property to Commercial Highway. As previously stated, it is a very significant corner on the north side of our city. It's at the corner of Memorial Boulevard and Cherry Lane, and a consultant has been selected for the third phase of Cherry Lane. You've already embarked on the design for Phase 1 and Phase 2, and the third and final phase of Cherry Lane goes all the way to and includes the interchange that Mr. Adalot spoke of at 840, and that road is planned to continue on to Northwest Broad Street. So this will be a significant roadway in our community, a major arterial that will connect Broad Street with Memorial Boulevard. And so at its connection, we believe that this is a great corner for commercial use and that, and we are really focusing on the corner. We understand the historical nature of the house to the north of us, and we do, we'll be required to put in buffering for that house. We will have a significant landscape buffer. We'll go ahead and put in a 25-foot Type E buffer, which will preserve those beautiful trees along the property line, and will fill in gaps for, that's in those trees so that you'll have a solid screen between whatever happens at our location, between us and the historical house to the north. Again, services are available, and at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. There are no plans for this property at this time.
And what kind of buffering do you have planned?
A Type E buffer.
Which would, can you elaborate on that?
It'd be 25-foot buffer, significant amount of trees within it. It's the thickest buffer that's provided in our landscaping ordinance.
Would that be all around the property to the north?
It'll be all around the property to the north and the property to the west, actually.
Any other questions for Mr. Huddleston?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Huddleston, the city's zone ordinance would only require a Type D buffer. How would you assure that the Type E buffer would be done instead?
We can, we can put in deed restrictions if you, and that'll, that'll be suitable for, for Mr. Alsop.
And y'all may have mentioned it earlier, and I just missed it. What is on the property to the west, the other that looks like a, between this property and the Calico Court property?
It's a single-family residence.
That is a single-family residence.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adalot, Mr. Huddleston, this is a, if, the historic house that we're talking about, is there a difference, is there any difference designation between a historic house and a residential subdivision in a buffering situation?
There is none required by our zone ordinance.
Anything else, Mr. Young?
Not yet.
Mr. Huddleston, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission before we open the public hearing? None. I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Evening Chairman Lamb and members of the commission. My name is Bill Jakes. I live at 225 North Manny. I'm not necessarily affected by this, but I want to speak to you tonight as a member of the Association for the Preservation of Tennessee Antiquities, also a member of the Rutherford County Historical Society, as well as a member of Oakland's. I want to speak to the historical value of this property and just offer my opinions for your consideration. Mr. Huddleston laid out some, some great ideas about the buffer. These are things that were on my mind, but I had, I had a little heftier vision of these buffers. Being as this historic doctor's office is exactly three feet from the property line, if you were to include a 25-foot setback, that's about from here to that wall. And whatever use this commercial property ends up being, you could walk up to that fence and you could easily chuck a bottle at that, at that historic building. Granted, hopefully, nobody would want to do such a thing, but I see this 25-foot buffer is not quite enough to protect the value of this building. My suggestion, oftentimes, for other uses, there are 75-foot setbacks, as in power lines, easements, and I believe if you could implement a 75-foot setback all around this property, I've done the measurements, it would be about eight tenths of an acre. Obviously, he's not going to lose that property. It's just going to be a buffer zone, and I do believe it should be recorded as a deed restriction onto the property so that it carries with that property from here on out. I'd love to say that I don't know Mr. Alsop. I don't wish him any ill will whatsoever, and my sole purpose here is to speak in favor of this nearly 200-year-old building that Mr. Ridley has spent the last 50 years of his life maintaining and preserving, and I believe that we should do everything we can to help him continue that effort. I appreciate your letting me speak tonight and...
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. Who would like to be next?
Good evening and thank you. My name is Marlene Sewell. I live at 250 Gordon Court, which is right behind the smaller orange area at the back of that property. Two things. One, as I'm concerned, there's a big stand of trees between Mr. Ridley's house and mine, and I would certainly like to see that stay. It's pretty. It's got lots of wildlife. We have wild turkeys, and we have deer continually, at least in our backyard. The other thing that I don't know that anyone's really aware of is that pond, when it overflows water-wise, sneaks through the back of that property, comes, goes along the outside edge of ours and goes into a pond that's two houses over. So I'm concerned as to what would happen if that was covered over or left and other things were put there. That's pretty much, I'm just really concerned about what they would put there on that piece of property. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sewell. Mr. Ridley, please, for the record, please state your name and address once more, please.
Sir, I'm sorry.
State your name and address one more time, please.
Jim Ridley.
Thank you, sir.
4431 Lebanon Road. I want to tell you a little bit about my house so you know more about it. It is about 190 years old. It was, the first records we have of it, the instructor, headmaster of Bradley Academy, who was James K. Polk's teacher, was the first owner we've been able to find any record of. So James K. Polk more than likely visited the house several times, which is a little unusual. The house has such historical significance that the United States Department of the Interior has listed it as a national historic property. It was in the Civil War. It has been in several books. It was, my wife and I bought it in 1960, and have spent the rest of her lives together restoring it until she died two years ago. The doctor's office that was mentioned, James K. Polk's headmaster's son was Dr. Black, and he was the owner of the house during the Civil War. His office was in the yard like so many rural doctors were. Dr. Black was a very avid Confederate sympathizer, and he hid Confederate escapees behind the lines in a hidden room up in the top of my house. You had to crawl across the roof and go through a window to get in there. And the Northern Army, the War of Northern Aggression, found, found him doing this little trick, and so they had him in the courthouse to be hanged the next day. And that was the night that Nathan Bedford Forrest rode in and liberated Murfreesboro and set him free. And so that is basically the historic significance of my house. I'd like to say a word or two about the soccer complex. The city of Murfreesboro has invested such, such an enormous amount of money in, in the soccer complex. It is so very popular. It has attracted tourists from almost everywhere. Of those games, I didn't realize how far-reaching they were until I was on a bus in San Francisco, and this lady next to me asked where I was from, and I said, "You've never heard of it, but it's Murfreesboro, Tennessee." She said, "Well, my son plays soccer in the complex there." Now, this was San Francisco. I was just amazed. I think part of the, of the charm of the soccer complex is its rural setting. I don't think you would want to have stores that sold cigarettes and beer and maybe tattoo parlors and liquor stores, whatever else this type of zoning allows. I don't think you'd want it across from the soccer complex. I think it would hurt it terribly. Part of the charm of the soccer complex and the things that the tourists rave about is its setting. It's got the VA golf course on one side, and, and it's, it's a very rural kind of a community. The traffic is very, very heavy on Memorial and Lebanon Road, though, if you all are familiar with it, very, very heavy. I'm afraid commercializing this corner would just add to that traffic, in particular when there is a soccer game going on. The extra... going on. The, the extra traffic going in and out of a, of a strip mall or whatever is proposed for this would not be any help. We need to really try to protect the last few historic parts of our, of our town. There are so, very few of them left. Just, just around the hospital, three of the most historic homes in town, including the home of Mrs. Douglas MacArthur, were torn down to make parking lots for the hospital. Now the hospital's gone. So you see, but the houses can never be brought back, and if you commercialize this property, it can never be brought back. It'll never look this way again. I know that some of you, even if you're not actively involved in preservation efforts, I know you're sympathetic because I can see your, your support of the Main Street Organization, which has saved our downtown. You have also supported the Manny Avenue project, which has made Manny Avenue look like it hasn't looked in a long time, and called attention to the Old Dixie Highway. When I was a kid, I used to stand on the corner of Main and Manny, and as the convoys of soldiers rode by during the Second World War, I would run out and get their autographs, and sometimes they would give me a patch that they wore on their shoulder or something like that. It was a very interesting time for Murfreesboro, a very important time for Murfreesboro. This is, this is your chance to save just a small bit of history without making too much of an effort, and I would certainly hope that you're able to do it and save a reminder of what Murfreesboro used to be at one time for all those that live here in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley. Who else? Please, please, sir. I'd like to applaud myself, but we don't do applause in here, so thank you very much. Who would like to be the next speaker? Mr. Adell, you're welcome to speak again, but please keep your comments to the subject matter at hand, and please refrain from any personal...
I think this directs...
Please refrain from any personal attacks, okay?
George Adell, 3940 Sider Drive. You know, Murfreesboro's got a lot of good barber shops. You get a lot of good talk-in barber shops. It was, I guess, nine months ago, somebody that works for the city was in the barber shop talking about this very piece of property, sir, and about the discussions of making this commercial, bringing it into the city. And the, the comment was made that they were told at that time by Mr. Adalot, "You'll never see a commercial property in front of my park as though it were his own." When I look, here we are, nine months later, we've got an application to be annexed in. We've got an annex, I mean, a application to change zoning. Something must have happened in that nine months since this conversation at the barber shop, and you know, this gentleman that owns the property next door had some outstanding, excellent points. And, and I'm going to go on the record right now as to telling you how this is going to turn out. You folks are going to listen to those people who are for it, those people who do whatever they do for you behind the scenes. You're going to listen to those of us that don't want to see this, and you're going to turn around and you're going to give the man with the money exactly what he wants. There's not going to be a 75-foot buffer. I don't think there'll be a 25-foot buffer. We were promised a lot of things before we were Adalotted years ago. So I'm, I'm going to sit here and I'm going to just watch y'all do your vote, going through the motions. Your minds are already made up. It's pitiful. That's one of the reasons people don't put so much faith in government anymore. I can't believe we got a lot of the same members on this board here that were on the board whenever we got Adalotted eight years ago, and, and I'm just amazed. I don't know why other people don't want to come in and, and try for this. You got a pretty good thing going. You say, "You're not going to put this in front of my park," nine months later. By gosh, what money changed hands to who? Whose bank account got flushed? And now, by golly, it's going to happen. And I just want to say, when it does happen, I'm going to say, "George Adell told you all so." Thank you so much.
Thank you, too. Would anybody else like to comment?
My name is Joyce Moorhead, and I live at 4123 Calico Court, and I just want to say that all the people that turned out here tonight that live up and down Cherry Lane, we live in the little cul-de-sac area, actually, Calico Court, we're concerned about being annexed into the city as well as going commercial because it'll be just one chip, the first chip off the block, to our demise. I mean, we all feel like that, I mean, look at Thompson Lane. At one time, it was a cattle path, and now it takes just a relatively short period of time until we're all just looking back and saying, "Well, that used to be where we lived." And I am concerned about it. I don't know Mr. Huddleston at all. I've heard from neighbors that he's a fine man, but he seems to be a good man with a pretty good exit strategy. He has an agenda. He's not wanting to just be a good neighbor. He's a good neighbor now. You know, he wants, there's something that is fueling him to want this right now to, to go commercial. It's, in my opinion, where he, it will be more agreeable for people that want to buy this lot. He did have his house up for sale, and there was no one that was interested for a long time. So if he can have this in his back pocket, you know, to be commercial, then it could be open to a strip mall, and quite frankly, I just really hate to see that, just like Mr. Ridley said. We are fiercely protective of our homes. I don't have a historic home, but it's one that I have worked hard and tried to preserve, and I, I would just like to see things stay the same. And I know that, that's probably a pretty stupid remark because progress is progress, but I think that we have yielded up some pretty good, you know, things out in that area because of the soccer park. It is something that we have grown to love, but at the same time, it has brought a lot of adjustments. So I appreciate your time in letting me speak. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Hello. My name is Glenn Birdwell. I live at 276 Cherry Lane, on Cherry Lane, the third house down from the intersection. When we first moved to Cherry Lane, we were on a quiet two-lane street with cows grazing in the field across from us. That changed dramatically with the widening of the road and subsequent construction of the soccer park. Throughout all of that, the residential community remained the same, a nice neighborhood with people who kept up their homes. When we purchased our home, it was with the intention of living the remainder of our days at that location. Now we are faced with a change that could totally alter our neighborhood. If you allow this to go forward, it will diminish the quality of life in our residential neighborhood. It will start the transformation of what is a quiet residential community where homeowners take pride in their properties into one where properties become rental homes, developers will consolidate properties, and after being granted zoning changes, a street that now has nice homes with owners who care will just see another strip mall, gas stations, and fast-food establishments fronting the soccer park. Should this rezoning go through, I worry about much more than lighting. I worry about the prospect of crime. I worry about the increase in traffic. I worry that whatever businesses may come in initially may or may not be the same business there five, 10, or 20 years later. And mostly, I worry about the domino effect. The value of our homes will decrease, the neighborhood will decline, and eventually disappear as a residential area. Once a property is zoned commercial, to my knowledge, it has never regained residential zoning again. If this were your home, if this were your situation, I think you would be in my shoes, saying pretty much the same thing. You will be deciding the future, not of just the property in question, but of the neighborhood itself. I sincerely hope you take into consideration the people who live there. Also, my next-door neighbor, Mr. Tony Rollins, 284 Cherry Lane, is out of town this evening, but asked me to convey his opposition to the zoning change as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Birdwell. Anybody else?
Good evening again. My name is Joseph Haas. I live at 1133 Bramble Trail. I'd like to speak against this zoning, this rezoning, to make this a commercial property. I really didn't have much notice of this. I only found out about it from a little paragraph in yesterday's Daily Dew of News Journal, and I was afraid this was going to happen when I saw the, the sign-up on the property that it was for sale and never did sell. I know that Mr. Huddleston invested a lot of money. According to the property tax records, he spent somewhere between $600,000 and $700,000 since 1998 on these two parcels alone in question, just in purchase costs. And I understand he also spent a lot of money trying to rehabilitate the house on the corner there that's on the property in question. It actually used to be a frat house. I was actually inside the house before Mr. Huddleston bought it, when the frat house was having a yard sale, and it was in pretty poor condition, to say the least. I don't know if you've ever seen the movie Animal House, but that's what it looked like it happened inside that house. And he's apparently spent some money there. I don't know why he's invested all this time and money in the house, except he has had problems selling it because of its location, and like some of the early speakers mentioned, this is probably going to help him sell the house. So I think that's probably what's behind this annexation and rezoning. He has not been able to sell the property, even though he has spent some time and money on the house itself. We, we have enough grocery stores, drugstores, all these types of things nearby. I don't know that we're going to have a tattoo parlor there. My understanding is from Mr. Adalot that commercial highway means pretty much anything that has been already built along Highway 231 there, all the way into town. We have Walgreens. We have Publix. We have a lot of gas stations. We have all kinds of businesses up and down that road now that are already close enough, I think, for everybody there. We don't really need more of it. I think we've got plenty of that now. I would also hate to see a nationally-recognized historic house right next to a Walgreens store. That just, just doesn't seem to fit in, but I guess progress, in quotation marks, will march on. I also want to mention the soccer complex. I agree 100% with what Mr. Ridley said about that. He covered my concerns pretty well about that. The children playing there, the national recognition it's, it's having, and I would hate to see some of the things that might happen to that property affect the reputation the soccer field has, has built over the years. And I think that also, Mr. Huddleston, I'd also say, I think Mr. Huddleston, he, he knew what he was getting into when he bought this property. I don't think he originally planned to do what he's doing now. I think he originally planned on buying the house and the properties and fixing them up and reselling them. I do think that the reason he is trying to get this done is because he has not been able to sell the house. And I don't know if that is reason enough for the city and the government to get involved in helping him to sell his property. I'm sure it'll be set at a much higher value once it's rezoned commercial. Right now, according to the property tax records, the two parcels together, the land alone, is worth about $220,000, according to the Rutherford County Tax Assessor's Office, and that's about $20,000 an acre roughly. I don't know what it's going to be worth commercial, but I'm sure it'll be more. I also want to address some of the concerns about the neighborhood. Mr. Adalot also told me today, it's basically not a matter of when, if, but when my subdivision, Cherry Lane Acres, will be annexed into the city because it is also part of what they call the urban growth zone of the city. It's also my understanding that, I don't know if anybody else here knows this, but the city, it hasn't been mentioned, but the city can actually annex any adjacent property without the property owner's request and against their wishes. I'm pretty sure I'm restating him properly, that, that even if nobody requests to be annexed into the city, the city can initiate the annexation themselves and against their wishes. I don't like that at all. I don't think that ought to be allowed at either. And I don't like the fact that the neighborhood that I've lived in for almost 20 years and taken pride in for that, that length of time is, is about to be changed. I believe, I believe there's plenty of development there already, and I hope you take that into consideration when you vote tonight. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Charles. Anybody else? Anybody at all? That concludes the closing of the public hearing. I'll make a comment. Been some accusations brought up here tonight that I find inappropriate, reprehensible, and, and almost slanderous against the, some of the individuals who work for the city of Murfreesboro and the members of this commission. These comments are inappropriate. They're definitely unfounded, and I resent those type of accusations. I just want to go online and saying that right now. They're highly out of the standard from normal comments about proposals that come before this commission. That being said, the comments or questions for our members of this commission?
I just want to add, and wonders why nobody else wants to come up here and do what we do. I mean, I can imagine.
Mr. Lamb, I have a question from Mr. Adalot. Is there anything in our ordinance that would, with a park zoning across the street, could it's, could beer or wine or liquor go next to a park zone? If a gas station went in or a Dairy Queen or...
Okay. Two, two things come to mind. Number one, to my knowledge, there is nothing in the city's zoning ordinance that would preclude that type of use adjacent or near park. The second thing that comes to mind is the city's alcohol regulations in the city code. Those alcohol regulations do make some distance requirements for such things as liquor stores or liquor-by-the-drink, separations between churches or schools, but that's not a function of zoning as much as it is a function of the city code dealing with alcoholic beverages. So, so I guess in the short answer, there is nothing in the zoning ordinance, and I'm not aware of anything in our city code at present, although that's a possibility of something that could, could be changed. We faced a similar type of question a couple of years ago on Manny Avenue with a liquor store, and there was a change in the separation requirements for churches and liquor stores at that time because the council felt it wanted to offer some protection for, for churches.
But the park is not in that park.
To my knowledge, a park is not currently, has something that specifies a distance requirement.
Mr. Huddleston?
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. Want to say that we, too, have been inspired by Mr. Ridley's historical perspective on his house. We want to look, now, we want to go ahead and put in our deed restrictions that will double that 25 feet and make a 50-foot buffer along his property. I was doing some calculations. Mr. Jakes is 75 feet. I got three acres if we did that, so we'll meet him halfway and go with 50 feet on the buffer along Mr. Ridley in our deed restrictions. Also, in our deed restrictions, we would like to restrict uses that would not be compatible to the neighborhood, just like you have done in the past year on the Haynes property and the Gerald property. We, we don't want tattoo parlors or pond shops there either. In addition to those restricted uses, as, as were done on the Haynes and the Gerald property, we will also agree not to have liquor stores on our property. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Adalot, do we need to consider additional study time on this to, to actually get a list of the items that they would have as deed restrictions against the property so we could study that and vote on it with that in mind?
Well, actually, I would urge that you not put too much of that into your mind. Well, actually, I would urge that you not put too much of that into your mind, because number one, those deed restrictions would not be enforceable by the city. They would not be something that you could conditionally approve the zoning. They would be a private matter. Now, how much comfort that would give to you, that this would offer some compatibility is something that you'd have to decide by yourself. But I don't think that the idea of restrictive covenants should be what dominates your thought or how it conditions. I do think it's a very good gesture. It's something that is a, I do know that the value of restrictive covenants is very potent. I do know that they can be a very good way to regulate land. The situation is that the city cannot conditionally approve a rezoning such as this. Either you approve it or you don't. And once it's approved, if he violates his restrictions, we may tweak the owner's conscience, but it won't be us that will be enforcing it, and we'll have no legal ability to do it. Now, if you do want to defer action to allow him to work on this, that would be very appropriate, particularly if he's asking to be allowed an opportunity to work on it. And as with the Haynes property and with the Gerald property, the restrictions were actually were developed and put into place after second reading with the city council on the ordinance for approval, but before third and final reading, as a gesture of good faith to the adjacent property owners. And really, that's what was being made there. It was a gesture of good faith to the property owners.
We'd be happy to do that. We'd be happy to take a deferral and work on these and bring back to you something more concrete.
Well, I think the inclusion of deed restrictions in his comments and what they plan on doing to the property are highly relevant, as far as our decision-making process. I know we can conditionally do it, but deed restrictions are enforceable by other people and the neighbors surrounding it. And also, lending institutions, I think, are reluctant to loan money for uses on properties that are restricted against it by the deed, are they not?
Mr. Lamb, part of what you said is true, but I do want to maybe qualify one of the nuances of what you said. The surrounding property owners may not have any standing to enforce a restrictive covenant unless they have been given that privilege through the process or are parties to it themselves. Now, but yes, yes, with lending institutions, with potential buyers, that is something that they are very, very careful to check out with the title insurance and with the lending. They want to check out those restrictions before they authorize lending on property.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, Mr. Lamb, I have a question. Ms. Hudson, I would like to see something of a burn description in print or something like that. We're sort of in a dilemma here. It's really hard to go against property rights, because wars have been fought over property rights. And it's not my job to tell you what you can and cannot do with your property. But this is a very sensitive property, with the historic aspect, as you well know. And then you've got the neighborhood aspect, where the neighbors have been there, longstanding neighbors that back up to a commercial property. But I would like to make a note that we've got the subdivisions of Berkshire, Ennsbrook, Georgetown, and Garrison Cove, all back up to Kroger's, except for Ennsbrook, and it's zoned commercial across the street. So we have instances in this city where very nice subdivisions, upper-scale subdivisions, are next door to commercial property. So if it's done right, it can be done. We need to make sure that the neighbors have some input. And we've had meetings, but I think we need to continue this dialogue. And I'd like to see you work with Mr. Ridley, who's been our neighbor for 50 years, get some assurances of what this could be if we choose to do that.
We'd be happy to do that.
And with that, I move for deferral.
Motion is made. And seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Chairman Lamb, this is a point of information. The annexation that you've approved, I'm going to hold it back from going to the council until it moves forward, until we make a decision on the zoning, so that they can move together in tandem.
I presume that's what the applicant would want done. Okay, the motion is deferred, then. We'll move on to the next public hearing, which will be item A on the agenda, that being amendments to the zoning ordinance to create a CCO, a City Core Overlay District, and proposed rezoning to implement the South Manny Avenue Zoning Study Planning Staff Act. Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. The subject of the next eight public hearings are going to be centered around the issue of the City Core Overlay District. This is a project that we've been working on for a couple of years now, actually several years, if you consider the South Manny Avenue, excuse me, the Manny Avenue Zoning Study we did several years ago with Doug Tennant and Barge Wagner, Sonnenkannen. And at that time, we had a neighborhood group that helped us prepare that study. Several years have passed on that, and as we began the construction of Manny Avenue, it became very apparent that we began to need to match land use with zoning in that area. About a year ago, we had a neighborhood meeting at the Patterson Community Center. It was well-attended. There was a lot of people who offered thoughts about how to improve the neighborhood and the zoning. After that, we studied more in depth, what we had heard, what the zoning conditions were, and the problems that we as planners, my staff and former planners, have experienced as we tried to administer zoning regulations. And basically, what we find is that a large part of the City Core Overlay area, the area that is south of Main Street, north of Mercury, west of Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and east of South Church Street, that area was developed before we had zoning. And there weren't those zoning regulations that the city had that guided things like setbacks, things like land uses. And it developed as a part of a community that is different fundamentally from our newer parts, the areas that have developed since the 1950s, when we adopted zoning. That's a milestone in our community, as with many communities, that we actually adopted zoning in the late 1940s and began to implement in the 50s. And that began to guide a more suburban type of land use. This is more of an urban core. So about a year ago, we had a neighborhood meeting. We got input. We studied. We prepared a study. It brought back to the planning commission. And then about a month ago, actually two months ago, we had a neighborhood meeting where we began to discuss specifics of what we're proposing to do. What we are proposing to do, I'm going to give a very quick overview, because I think most people have a little bit of background information, because of the neighborhood meetings and our efforts to outreach, the information we've had available. But first of all, we're going to create this new zoning district, and it will be an overlay district. It will overlay over the existing zoning classifications. So if your property is zoned to RS8 or RS4, it will continue to be zoned to RS4, unless it's one of these seven areas that we're proposing to change. If you're a commercial highway, that remains. What this City Core Overlay District will do is that it will help to match the land use with the zoning. For instance, the commercial areas. In the study area, particularly the very western end, over in the area around Manny Avenue, the area around Academy Street, around South Manny, Spring Street, that area is zoned commercial highway, but there are numerous single-family, and in some cases, some rental homes in that area. They're non-conforming uses. And the owners are, well, they're in a bad way, and sometimes they don't know they're in a bad way. And the situation is, if they have a fire, if they want to build an addition, they may not be able to rebuild back what they've got. And their lot is simply so small that they don't have the ability to put in a commercial or a viable commercial use. So one of the things we want to do in this commercial highway area in the overlay district is to allow single-family, two-family, three-family, four-family, and even multifamily dwellings, depending upon how much lot area you have, in that area that's zoned commercial highway. This is already permitted in the commercial local zone. So we're looking to expand the uses permitted in the commercial by allowing residential as well. It becomes a mixed-use district. The next thing we're looking to do is to expand some of the uses in the RS4, RS8, RM12, RM16 districts. These areas have some non-conforming uses. For instance, the Clearview Restaurant, a restaurant that I find enjoyable. If it were to burn down, it could not rebuild under the current zoning. So what we're looking to do is to allow that to be a use permitted by special permit. Instead of having to go through a rezoning, they'd be able to come and go before the Board of Zone Appeals and meet certain requirements, like how they place their dumpsters, where their parking is, and such. In this area, we are also, there are such uses as barber shops. And some of these are in RS8 districts. And they've been there many years, and they've been enjoyed by the neighborhood. What we want to do is to allow them to be allowed, either by right or by special permit. So that's part of what the City Core Overlay does in terms of land uses. There's an extensive list of uses that are permitted, and this is something that we might want your input on. If you all have something you want to offer in that regard, we certainly want to hear it, because it may help us to formulate our recommendation to city council. The next part about the City Core Overlay District is that we're looking at allowing differences in the setbacks. For instance, in the RS8 district, there is a 30-foot required front setback. Well, many of the houses in the RS8 district throughout the area, some of them in the RS10 district, some of them in the RS15 district, do not meet the current setbacks. And as you drive the neighborhood, they don't look out of place. In fact, they look normal. However, if they were to be damaged or destroyed by fire, or by tornado, or whatever purpose, they could not be rebuilt in the same footprint. They'd have to be rebuilt further off the street. And that would cause the street to have a gapped, hooped appearance. Things would look out of kilter. So we're looking, instead of a prescribed setback that says a minimum 30-foot setback, we're looking at an average setback. To decide what your setback should be if you're building, you look at the two houses on each side of you, and you average that distance. If one is 15 and the other's 13, your setback will be 14. So you'll be able to build in line with them. So that is a second thing about the bulk regulations that will really improve this. The City Core is a more pedestrian-friendly area. And there are some uses that are just not really compatible in the commercial, that are in the commercial highway district. They're not really compatible with a pedestrian area. For instance, a used car lot along Manny Avenue up near Castle Street may really defy the fabric of the neighborhood, particularly if we want to see walkable community. And we've really invested a lot of effort to see Manny Avenue become a walkable community. But the same applies to East Vine Street, South Spring Street, Academy Street. These areas, probably there are some uses that just don't need to be there. And again, we have an extensive list of them. We did a similar thing with the gateway area, where there are certain uses that are just prohibited. In that list, there are such uses as liquor stores, as used car lots, some industrial uses. These are the things that would be excluded from anywhere in that district. So this is a rundown of the regulations. I'm certain that you all have all had an opportunity to have access to, find out more about them. If you haven't, I'll be glad to answer questions after the public hearing. I want to hear your questions. So we're going to have our public hearings. Now, what we're going to do is, we're going to have eight public hearings. The first public hearing will be about the amendments to the zoning ordinance, because if we don't create these amendments to the zoning ordinance, we can't zone anybody to the overlay district. The second public hearing will be to consider what land to be included in the overlay district. And you've probably seen the map. Ms. Ely will show it on the screen when that public hearing comes up. But it basically includes most all of the land on the south side of East Main Street, southward to Mercury Boulevard, but not including the New Walgreens, the Patterson Park, the Bradley Elementary, or the Housing Authority land, and not including the Rite Aid or the automobile repair shops on Ash Street. It does not include the shopping center over there where Coach's Restaurant is. So that's the area. We're going to show you a map if you hadn't already seen it. We'll show it again. Then, the third public hearing will be to consider rezoning 421 South Academy Street from OGR to Commercial Highway, because with this change in the overlay zone, they will be back where they were before we rezoned them to OGR to allow them to rebuild their house, because they were one of the examples of people being stuck in that kind of situation. The fourth public hearing will be 325 East Castle Street, one single parcel, from commercial local to commercial highway. Again, this is a hearing that problem they had experienced. The fifth public hearing will be for property on South Manny Avenue and East State Street to be rezoned from RS4 to CH, since now we're going to allow residential uses. The sixth public hearing will be 467 Hancock Street, and that's Jess Family Restaurant, in the parking lot behind 703 East Castle Street, to be rezoned back from planned commercial development to RM16, since that will be a use permitted in RM16 district. The seventh public hearing will be for properties along Cassview Court to be rezoned from PRD to RS4. And then, the last public hearing is outside the proposed overlay district. And it has to do with properties that are bounded by South Academy Street, South Spring Street, East Main Street, and East Sevier Street, to be rezoned from CH to the Central Business District, because those properties were once upon a time in the Central Business District before we adopted our 1984 ordinance, and this is putting them back where they belong. So that's a quick rundown of what we're going to do. And I am wanting to get started with our first public hearing about creating the amendments to our zoning ordinance. And with that, Chairman Lamb, I'd be glad to answer questions for the planning commission, and then I'll take careful notes from people who come forward to speak.
Okay.
And then I'll have some comments to introduce each one one more time as we get to it.
Before we open the first public hearing here, does anybody on the planning commission have questions or comments? Okay, we'll open the public hearing pertaining to amendments to the zoning ordinance to create the CCO, otherwise known as the City Core Overlay District. I'll now open the public hearing. I ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Anybody at all?
Good evening. My name's Aurelia Holden. I live at 115 Gale Lane. I'm trying to get my remarks broken up into the different sections, since there's several different parts of things tonight. I have attended a number of the Manny Avenue meetings and the informative sessions. I've tried to keep up with it through the years. I understand the need for flexibility within the area and for the ability to enhance what's there and to provide for some new. But I do have some concerns about the desirability of the totality of the scope of what's being proposed. I get, one of the things is there are residential uses currently not allowed in the commercial local or commercial highway that'll be permitted. Anytime you can put residential back downtown, I'm all in favor of that. So I think that's great. The part that I have concerns with is there are non-residential uses not currently allowed in these districts, but which are proposed to be allowed in the overlay district either by right or special use. I'm selfish. I live in my, I'm zoned RS8, as are many of the neighborhoods that back up along Vine Street, up and down where my street runs into. Under this proposal, an antique shop, photo art studio gallery, beauty barber shop could all be allowed if someone just bought the property and decided, as I understand, just bought the property and decided to put it there. Special use permits would be for Delicatessen or Restaurant Limited. I live in a residential area. I don't want to come home and find that a property across the street or around the corner from me has been sold, and is all of a sudden going to be an antique shop, lovely as though it may be, and as much as I enjoy antiquing. And it's going to be occupied from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night, and then it's going to be vacant the rest of the night, as will something that moves in next door and next door. I don't know how appropriate that is for handling smaller areas. When I was looking through the Manny Avenue study, it seems to me the Manny Avenue corridor, some of these recommendations are more appropriate for that corridor and to the west, as opposed to the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holden. Would anybody else like to speak?
My name is Marie Evans Miller, and I live at 610 East Main Street. I live in a residential area, and I have enjoyed it for many years. My family has enjoyed it for many years. I don't want there to be a change. I want us to continue residential. I think a lot of the plan involves possibly commercialization, change... I think a lot of the plan involves possibly commercialization, changes, setbacks, that kind of thing. I don't understand a lot of that. I just know that I want to, my home, to stay as it has been. I think the area involved, the area outlined, is very large. It's, it has diverse problems, diverse situations. And I think in my area, we should remain residential. That is my hope and prayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Bill Jakes, I live at 225 North Manny. I just wanted to voice a concern, but it's more of a question. You know, I don't know how to approach this. Manny Avenue, most of downtown 50 years ago, was a mix. You had homes that served meals. You had about three grocery stores down Manny Avenue. There were, you know, all of downtown had conveniences that you could walk to. And I hear what Mr. Adalot's saying about allowing some of these uses where they have not been allowed after the 84 rezoning that was, it was a little short-sighted. I guess my concern is, is that these uses to upgrade the residential areas to businesses, I don't have a particular issue with businesses scattered about town. I see that as the fabric of what downtown is. And I see that's why a lot of more dense towns have, have grown to be more popular and their property values have grown, because people want to walk to conveniences these days. I personally would like to see more of that downtown. My fear is maybe, like Aurelia mentioned, you just buy the house and open a sandwich shop. Now, I would assume, and this is the part I'd like to clarify, that any upgrade in use be held to the standards of that zoning that it would normally be held to. Parking setbacks. And I've seen this done in the plan developments, like the Demuses, where they were held to those standards. And so I guess that's my greatest concern, is that any of these projects not just be grandfathered or granted, but that they be held to the standards that you would anywhere else if you were to develop that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. I'm sure Mr. Adalot will have some comments on that. Would anybody else like to speak? Nobody? Close this public hearing. Mr. Adalot.
Let me first address Mr. Jakes. Absolutely, we do intend to hold them to the standards. I will point out, we will do a little bit different in some cases, in the sense that we will give credit for on-street parking, or parking that's within the specified distance of a publicly-owned, freely-available parking lot, like the city's parking garage here, or the parking lot on South Church Street across from the police building, or the parking lot on Spring Street that the city owns, that is freely available, no one has to pay for, first come, first served. So we will give credit for that. Other than that, no. We will still hold them to landscaping, although we're going to be a little bit less demanding on how much, because quite simply, there's not as much size on the lots. But yes, we will require parking. We will require landscaping. We're not going to allow them just to have a gravel parking lot either. It's going to be more than just dumping a load of gravel in the backyard, you're in business. It's going to be, you're going to have to pave it, probably with the curbs. And we will do site plan review. We will be doing a site plan review to make sure people do. So it's not like just buy a house and go into business. It's going to be, think it through, submit your plans, go through a review process, meet standards, do the construction, get your permits, and certificate of occupancy, then go into business. So I want to let you know that's the case. You know, one of the things that is difficult is drawing the map. And I've invited those who wanted to maybe look at remapping or changing the map to let me know. I spoke with Mr. Becker today, and at first, his first comment was, well, maybe we ought to just cut the historic zoning district out of the, of this. And I said, that'd be fine, me, I'm glad to do that. But I want you to consider for a moment that there might be benefits for it. The historic zoning does not impact the city core. And the city core does not impact the historic zoning. The uses are regulated by the base zoning. But the historic zoning is more about construction methods and such. But I'm still willing to cut it out, because I think someday there will be a time when people on the street would actually value at least some of the aspects that the city core offers. And that is certainly something that we could do. We could cut out the, use the south boundary of the historic zoning district as the north boundary of the, of what we recommend to council. And I'll add this, we don't have to make a decision tonight. We could take this into consideration and discuss it again, and before we, before we do recommend. Ms. Holden, I understand your concerns. I think that if someone's going to go into business, I want them to be prepared, and I don't want them to destroy the fabric of the neighborhood in doing it. I really admire your street. I drive it frequently, and I enjoy making it as one of those really neat little places in town that I enjoy passing through as I go about my business in the community. And I wouldn't want to see, all of a sudden, and wake up one day and see a big sign out front that says Joe's Delicatessen. That would probably be a, the kind of thing that I would have regretted allowing happen. On the other hand, I think of situations like Mr. Sewell. Mr. Sewell bought the old Glantons Market, and it was zoned residential. And Mr. Sewell went through a process that took him about six months to get it rezoned. And then after he got it rezoned for the restaurant, which is, which really turned out to be good, Jeff's Family Restaurant's a nice little place to go. I go there occasionally and enjoy dining there. Problem was, he needed more parking, and then he had to go back through another six-month process to get the back parking lot approved for it. He didn't have any flexibility. It was really, it was really difficult for him to really make a good business. And he doesn't live there. Neither does his son, but they operate a nice business that is an asset to the neighborhood. So I wanted to balance those kind of needs with, with the kind of neighborhood thing. If the planning commission's got some suggestions, or you all have specific suggestions, let me know. I'm glad to consider them. Some of these uses that I'm suggesting, like a barber or beauty shop, we actually, we see those quite often through the Board of Zone Appeals in other places where someone has to operate out of their home, and they're very limited in their ability to have employees. But there's at least one of them in the RSA district right off of Castle Street, over there behind Patterson Community Center. And to my knowledge, they're not a problem there. They operate a good business, and they're a real asset to the neighborhood. And I'd like for them to be a conforming use. So I'm sort of offering the explanation there. I think what may be best is, before you vote on this, just maybe vote on them as a package after we've done it, or maybe decide to defer action. Because we don't have to have, we don't have to take action tonight on this. What I want to do is get input, so that you all can give me direction on what you all want to change.
Okay, so you want to go ahead and proceed with the other seven public hearings before we have a deliberation?
I think that is absolutely the best thing to do.
Moving on to item A2, proposed land to be included in the CCO overlay district. Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir. This is the, where we're going to decide what land to include. Whether we include Ms. Holden, whether we include the property on East Main Street. Ms. Ely, if you'll show the map. This is that large area.
Cable department. Go ahead and put it up.
Looking to see if it comes up on the monitor there.
If they're awake.
Oh, there we go. It is the area that's confined in the blue outline. And along the north side, that'd be the top of the page, that is East Main Street. It's hard to see the street name, so I'm going to go around the boundaries. Along the right-hand side, that's Middle Tennessee Boulevard. And then you'll see down there at the intersection with Mercury, it jogs around those, that block where the, I guess it's the Walgreens, and it used to be the Hollywood Video, since that's new development. Then jogs back down Second Avenue to Mercury, goes around Little Bread Place, and then cuts out the Housing Authority property, all the way over to Patterson Community Center and Bradley Elementary, they're left out. And then up to Ash Street, cuts out a couple of the auto repair places there, and then hits back to Broad Street. Goes up Academy Street to Spring Street, goes around the curve at Greenhouse, where Greenhouse Ministries is, down Sevier Street, and then back up Spring Street to Main Street. Everything within that boundary is what we're proposing to include. Now, now is the time that if you've got some specific areas that you think should not be included, please let, please let us know, because this will help us to, to map it and make changes if we want to cut people out, or if we want to add something. I do know that the owners of the properties that front Broad Street, right there at Manny Avenue, they have already, actually, one of them is in Scotland today and not able to attend the public hearing, but he did send a letter asking that his property, which already has a used car lot on it, that he be excluded. Mr. Hay, who has some lots down there, and there is an automobile dealership adjacent to it that is actually under contract to purchase him, asked that his lots be excluded. Because they front directly on Broad Street, because they're different, it would, it would be my recommendation we cut them out. And I'll provide you an exhibit to show you what I'm talking about after the, when we get to that part. But now we need to hear from the people who want to tell us what properties to map, include or exclude.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Ron Taylor. I live at 816 East Main Street, and I'll make it short and sweet. We just want to leave the historical district alone. Okay? That's it.
That's the short, that's the best.
Very good.
My name is Marie Miller. I live at 610 East Main Street. Please take East Main Street and the historic district out of this. Please, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Aurelia Holden, 115 Gale Lane. I would go a little bit farther than just the East Main district, because basically the lots behind that front Vine Street, back up against the historic district, they're part of the neighborhood, part of the fabric of that whole area. Depending upon what you decide to include in the first part of the agenda, which is the amendments to the ordinance, that would also influence other areas I might include. But I would think that you, Vine Street at the very minimum, which be your boundary for the north side of this district, because all of those houses, some of the lots go all the way through, some of them, some of them wrap around the corner. Currently, in the historic district, one of the things was to honor the neighborhood's significance. They're predominantly single-family homes, residences. If this, if East Main Street and part of the district that is listed on the property as lined in for the district, if it were included, three properties, there are only three properties in the Main Street Historic District that are not residential. Three more properties would by right be eligible to, to the next day, go commercial. Go within the uses that are allowed for the beauty shop, those three that are proposed by right. So that would be three more automatically allowed that fit in the RSA. I think most of the people who live on East Main Street would want the back of their properties. I would not want to back up against any kind of commercial development. It's a residential area. I understand making allowances to have some commercial uses and the flexibility for people. We have that now with owner occupancy, where someone is going to be there on their property. And that right for use, as long as they have a business there, they're able to live there, able to do it. If they move, that right goes away and it returns to residential. So you're not dealing with a creeping area where something comes in, and then the next thing comes in, and the next thing comes in. Because downtown is a very desirable place to live. A lot of people are moving back there. In looking at this, and in looking at everything, I applaud all the work that's done, because I know there's a lot of work, and a lot of people have comments and everything. But in looking online today, on the planning commission's site for historic zoning, going, going, gone. That's what could happen if steps are not now taken to preserve our heritage. There's a lot of heritage in this area that needs to be preserved, and I think we need to pull out and be very careful about what is included, that we don't damage the fabric of, the historic fabric of downtown and the historic character of the residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holden. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay, I'll close this portion of the public hearing. We'll move on to item A3, property at 421 South Academy Street to be rezoned from Office General Residential to Commercial Highway. Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir. This is one parcel, and it is located at 421 South Academy Street. Several years ago, when the owners desired to rebuild, they rezoned Commercial Highway. They were unable to be rebuilt under the Commercial Highway District. We, at that time, rezoned them to Office General Residential, just so that that could happen. What this does, if they're included in the CCO, the Commercial Highway would have, with the CCO overlay, would allow them to have done what they needed to do. They will be a conforming use, so I would think that they should be rezoned back to Commercial Highway. So we need to conduct a public hearing on that one parcel for that purpose.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to item A4, that's the property at 325 East Castle Street, to be rezoned from Commercial Local to Commercial Highway. Mr. Adalot?
Similar situation, when the owners wanted to rebuild, Commercial Highway would not allow it. They were rezoned to Commercial Local just to allow it to happen. The new overlay would allow them to be conforming. So I recommend it be zoned back to Commercial Highway, if the CCO is adopted over them. And with that, we need to conduct a public hearing.
Sure. I'll open the public hearing this time, asking anybody that'd come forward that'd like to speak about this parcel. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Move on to item A5, property along South Manny Avenue and East State Street to be rezoned from RS4 to Commercial Highway. Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir. Within this area, there are several parcels that are already commercial. One of them is immediately adjacent to the Scales Funeral Home. Some of them are developed with multifamily uses, such as the property at the southwestern corner of South Manny and East State. Also, a big part of this is the Old City Cemetery. Its status did not change, but rather than having a little pocket of iris for it, we looked at just including all that to Commercial Highway. And I would recommend that they be included in this, but only if the CCO overlay is also adopted. And we need to conduct a public hearing on this rezoning.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing this time, asking anybody to come forward on this proposal. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to item A6, property at 467 Hancock Street, in the rear of 703 East Castle, to be rezoned from a planned commercial district to RM16. Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir. I mentioned this in my introductory remarks. This is the Jeff's Family Restaurant. It was rezoned several years ago from RM16 to planned commercial development, to allow the development of the restaurant. Under the CCO regulations, this restaurant could be developed upon approval by the Board of Zone Appeals for a special permit. With that being the case, it allows Mr. Sewell more flexibility than he currently has, because pretty much if he changes anything or needs to do something for his business, he is, has to go back through a, basically a three- or four-month zoning process. The BGA offers him more flexibility, and if the CCO overlay is adopted, I would recommend that he also be rezoned to RM16.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing for this matter in question. Anybody that'd like to speak, come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to item A7, properties along Castle View Court to be rezoned from PRD to RS4. Mr. Adalot?
Yes, sir. This property is the Castle View subdivision located along the south side of Castle, or not Castle Street, but State Street. It's north of Castle Street, but does not front there. This property was zoned as a planned residential development several years ago to allow the development of subdivision. It's essentially an RS4 subdivision. But at that time, rather than zoning it RS4, the city zoned it as a planned commercial development. And if we are adopting the CCO overlay, I would recommend that this property be zoned to RS4 as well. It would basically make it a conforming use, and it would eliminate one of our planned developments that requires the, takes away some of the flexibility for property owners.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anybody that'd come forward that'd like to speak, please? Nobody at all? Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Move on to the final public hearing under this subheading A8, property bounded by South Academy Street, South Spring Street, East Main Street, and East Sevier Street to be rezoned from Commercial Highway to Central Business District. Ms. Adelot?
Yes, sir. This property consists of two entire blocks that are located south of East Main Street. They are not in the Historic Zone District. These properties are zoned Commercial Highway, which does require a 42-foot front setback for, for new construction. The reality of the situation is many of these buildings are built right out to the street. The churches, the Baptist Church, the Church of Christ, they are all the way out to the public right-of-way. They do not meet the current zoning requirements. They almost cover the entire blocks. Also, some of the other businesses, including the city's fire station, do not meet the setback requirements for Commercial Highway. These properties were zoned B3, which was the equivalent of the Central Business District under the city's prior zoning regulations. And what I'm recommending is that regardless of the city core overlay, these properties probably do need to be rezoned to the Central Business District. I will point out that the city's Borders Zone Appeals has issued several variances for construction on these blocks, particularly for the Baptist Church, First Baptist Church, because they've just built all the way around to the, to the street. They would benefit from the Central Business District zoning, and they would be very much like the other properties to the west of them that are already in that district.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak on this Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Adelot, we've had eight mini-public hearings, so to speak, pertaining to this. I heard you say something earlier about it might be in order to defer this for further study.
Yes. One thing that I, I did tell the people at the neighborhood meeting is that we study large and didn't recommend a little bit more precision. And what I have heard is some people who, who really aren't, really would prefer their properties not be included, and some other properties, and they've given some good reasons why. I want, I think it'd probably be appropriate for us to defer action. There's nothing that's compelling that makes us happy to happen tonight. Let me have a chance to take what I've heard, prepare a recommendation map, and then bring it back to you at either a day meeting or in a month, and see if you're ready to make a recommendation on these items then. No need to have another public hearing, but you would be, now, I'm suggesting that you may be ready to move forward as a group, or you may prefer to do as I said.
Now, I think we need to do what you said. I think we need to take the public input that we've heard tonight and tweak the proposal accordingly.
In case I'd suggest you defer, and I'm going to do that.
Move for deferral. Excuse me.
Ms. Adelot, how big is this CCO?
It's about 300 acres. I will point out something that you may find of interest. I was talking with Ms. Jacob today. We sent out over 1,400 notices.
Good.
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
Because I'll forget to ask it the next time. The, once this city core overlay, if it's adopted, and it gives certain property owners by right to have a commercial business in that piece, or on that piece of property, what will be dealt with with respects to setbacks that would maybe required of that commercial use that they will have by right, but they don't meet it with respects to the structure that's on that property at that point in time? How will that be handled?
Okay. If the structure is a legally established structure, it will be grandfathered.
Irrespective of the fact that it was residential before and then by right?
Regardless, regardless of change of use.
Okay.
But I will point out that in some cases, actually, unless you front upon a major arterial or a minor arterial, you will be allowed to have almost a 10-foot front setback in the Commercial Highway District. And the purpose there is to do something like we see in the downtown. We want a building to pull, the building out to the street to be able to put the parking in behind. You may recall, we had an application to the BGA and then a site plan to the Planning Commission for Mr. Fan on Manny Avenue.
Yes, sir.
We actively promoted doing that. The result is to achieve something like the Boulevard Restaurant on Middle Tennessee Boulevard, where the building is close to the street, and in some cases, having the home street, or rather, the sidewalk dining opportunities. And these, the landscaping would be a little bit relieved if you do have home, the sidewalk dining, to really give that as a, something to encourage people to do that if, if they're in a commercial zone. Now, that wouldn't be the case in a residential zone where they're doing, say, for instance, if they were doing the delicatessen and going to the BGA, they couldn't do that. But if they were in the Commercial Highway District and they wanted to build a commercial use up to the, within 10 feet of the public right-of-way, they could do it. And then they could put the front as a outdoor seating.
Ms. Adelot, by definition, what is the difference between a major and a minor?
That is a roadway classification. Major arterials are usually state highways like Broad Street. That's a, that is a major arterial. A minor arterial is often a street that connects to state highways, something like DeGiant Lane, for instance, or Compton Road, although it's a state highway. The streets like South Church Street, Broad Street, Memorial Boulevard, Rutherford Boulevard, Veterans Parkway, those are major arterials. They carry a much greater roadway volume. They have a higher traffic speeds often. Certainly, the, the function of the street is to move traffic in or around our community. Now, a minor arterial is much the same, except they're usually maybe three lanes, or they may be local streets that are not state highways.
Thank you.
And there's more to it than that, but that gives you the nutshell.
Cliff Notes version.
Yeah. I wonder if it would have been fitted in all areas as well.
Any other questions? If not, Mr. Young, write your motion.
I move for deferral.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion will be deferred. Moving on to item D, which is zoning application for amendment of approximately 22.7 acres of planned industrial district along Joby Jackson Parkway. Pinnacle Financial Partners, this applicant. Ms. Ely, you go start us out on this.
I will. Our next public hearing this evening is to consider amending a PID zone, and PID stands for Planned Industrial District Zone. The subject property is shaded orange in the map that's before you and also is on the screen at this moment. The property is located south of Joby Jackson Parkway, which is just south, or is adjacent to Interstate 24. You can see from the map that Interstate 24 runs along its southwestern property lines. The properties to the north are zoned LI, Light Industrial District, and PRD, Planned Residential District. The contiguous property to the west is zoned HI, and that's the currently under development, or actually, I think they've gotten their temporary certificate of occupancy, Amazon facility, and that is labeled on your maps as well. The properties that are to the east are developed city, or developed county subdivisions and are zoned R15 in the county, which is very similar to our RS15 district, and you can see those on the map as well. In 2008, this property was zoned PID, Planned Industrial District. And at that time, a program book was submitted to you, and that program book became what defined the zoning in this, in this area. This was, of course, before the Amazon was constructed or even, I think, thought of for this property. The change is primarily to change the location of a street. And I'll go ahead and put a map on the screen now, and you can see, this is a page just in your program books as well, that you can either scroll to on your iPads, or you can look in the paper agenda. And you can see the location of the street and how, where it runs. This was before the signalized intersection was constructed for the right-of-way at the Amazon Fulfillment Center. The right-of-way is called Richard Reeves Drive. So rather than constructing an additional road for any future industrial user on the site, it would be wise to utilize that inter, that signalized interchange or intersection. So they want to redesign the street so that it does line up with Richard Reeves Drive. And I'll go to the next map, and it shows the proposed location. So they're actually wanting to shift the location of most of, or half of, that proposed roadway, which would be the Richard Reeves Drive extension to the east, which would put it closer to the subdivision, as you can see there, and it ends in the cul-de-sac. The property owners, or the applicant is proposing as a solution to have a 20-foot, type-E buffer, and I guess I'll probably need a little bit, well, they want a 25-foot wide buffer, or 20, or type-E buffer is actually 20 feet, but they want to make it 25 feet. And then they want a 6-foot berm. So the landscaping would go directly behind the houses, and that would be 25 feet. And in addition to that, they want a 6-feet-tall berm. The berm will be 6 feet high, but it will be 40 feet wide. So essentially, you're getting the 40 feet plus the 25 feet as a distance of a buffer from these properties. If, for where the roadway is, of course, you can add the width of the road to that, and that would put any proposed or future building on the site that much further from the property. But as far as buffers go, they are committing to the 6-foot-high berm and the landscaping. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting this past Monday, October 1st. Mr. Adelot and Mr. Robert Lewis were both in attendance at that meeting, and I think they listened to some of the concerns of the neighbors. And Ms. Adelot, I think he said he has a report from that neighborhood meeting and maybe what they talked about, and he wanted us to present that. I did want to say, after Ms. Adelot and I finish introducing this project, the, Mr. Bill Huddleston's here, and he also wants to go through a brief description. After that, you should conduct your public hearing and formulate your recommendation to send to City Council. If you have any questions, anytime, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Go ahead, Ms. Jones.
Before we keep going with this, I just want to say that I'll be abstaining from any discussion and any vote on this tonight.
And I'll be doing the same thing due to my relationship with anyone.
And we have four members left, so we still have a quorum present, so we'll move right on with it.
All right. I want to make a short report. We met with the neighborhood on Monday evening at the Black Fox Elementary School. It was a well-attended meeting. There were a lot of people there. One of the elements that we discussed, as I told the Planning Commission, I felt we at least need to take this as an opportunity to discuss, was whether or not to extend Tenby Drive over to this street extension. And I'm very mindful that when we approve the zoning plan that's currently in place, that the Planning Commission and the council voted to not make that connection and to keep it closed. As I told the Planning Commission, I wanted to review that, at least to the point where we would just do a reality check or a, check the pulse of the neighborhood. At the meeting, I asked for a show of hands, and there was a lot of discussion to boot, but I would say they vigorously and vehemently demanded that we not open that street. And I told the Planning Commission, or the members there, that I would report that to the Planning Commission. And unless the Planning Commission just really wants to undertake this subject, I have no interest in pursuing it, because it was very clear, the neighborhood does not, does not want to make the connection. And that was going to be a source of considerable dissatisfaction on their part if, if you were to do so. And I told them that I would make that report, and that I expected that upon my reports, you all would probably not have any interest in making that connection. So I've made my report, and I told you what I told them.
Well, with the neighbors making their opinions known about it, with the planning staff more or less endorsing that, I think the Planning Commission will go along with those two recommendations, probably. So we'll see what happens on it. Are we, any other comments before we open the public hearing?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. In that case, I'll open. Mr. Huddleston, you have a presentation first. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. I'll try to be brief. My name is Bill Huddleston. I'm president of Huddleston Steel Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of Pinnacle Financial Partners, who is the current owner of this property. This is a planned industrial development that you rezoned a few years back, and we do not propose to change any part of what you approved, except for the roadway. We do not propose to change any of the uses, any of the setbacks, any of the buffers. They will all remain intact, as shown on the original PID, but we do need to change the roadway. And the reason we need to change the roadway is because we're tied to, we want to tie to that connection that Amazon has created just to the west of our property. The board I'm showing right now shows the currently planned roadway, the way it is in the existing PID, and you can see it shows our connection very close to that roadway called, I think it's Richard Reeves Drive, that Amazon constructed, and they have a traffic signal at that location. So instead of us having another main access out to Joby Jackson, we propose to utilize that access as it abuts into this property. So this board shows our proposal. It shows our proposed roadway connecting to Richard Reeves Drive as it exists and as it connects to Joby Jackson Parkway at that signalized intersection. Because of the angle into our property, we can't just all of a sudden connect to that and go straight down the west property line. We've got to swing that roadway in order to provide the proper radiuses for, for the roadway. Now, we do have a type-E buffer along the Magnolia Trace subdivision to the east. I believe that was part of the original PID application, and that buffer will remain intact up against the Magnolia Trace subdivision. In addition to that 25-foot landscaping buffer along Magnolia Trace, we also propose to add a berm, which is 6 feet high, and gives you 40 more feet of space from that 25-foot landscaping buffer. So this new roadway would be 76 feet from the Magnolia Trace subdivision at its closest point. Then if you add the front, minimum front setback onto that roadway, any building would be 108 feet from the property line at Magnolia Trace. That is the way we propose it. Now, if we left it as is, buildings could be put right up against that Magnolia Trace subdivision. You could have buildings within 25 feet of Magnolia Trace, and that's where loading docks or dumpster pads could be. So in our view, this is a better proposal, because we're providing good distance away from Magnolia Trace with this roadway, and so they won't have bill, the backs of buildings up against the property there. We did have a neighborhood meeting Monday night. It was well-attended. I'm guessing between 40 and 50 people attended that. As a result of that meeting, we want to add a couple of things to our amendment. We would like to go ahead and also plant white pines, a row of white pines along the top of our berm to add to the buffering. We also propose that streetlights for, for this proposed roadway would be provided only on the east side of the roadway, so that they would be pointing away from the Magnolia Trace subdivision. This time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Huddleston? We may have to have you come back up at the conclusion of the public hearing, Mr. Huddleston. Mr. Young, Jeff?
No, no, I'll wait till after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There's no other questions, so I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Robert, middle initial W, last name Fritz, F-R-I-T-Z. I, my bride and my daughter reside at 121 Prairie View Drive in Magnolia Trace. Our backyard would be contingent and adjoined to the proposed right-of-way, or very close where exactly how the curve is going to turn. I don't think any of us are 100% sure at this point. What I would like to mention this evening is, I, as I sat here and listened to some of the other requests, and some of the other people that spoke, see a commonality and a thread that seems intertwined between the fact that some of these things have been discussed before, before some of the very same members that are sitting on the Planning Commission now. I know Mr. Adelot was there at the time, four or four and a half years ago, when this was discussed first. At that time, we were all told, nobody had any idea of the occupancy that was going in on the land that was being changed or disowned. in on the land that was being changed or zoning being changed. Now, since that time, I read in the local newspaper, which we all know is gospel. I read in the local newspaper that the deal with Amazon had been discussed long before we had that meeting, but that it wasn't called "Amazon," it was called by a number. So certain people were privy to who it was. Now, what I am asking is, if nobody knew about it, and if nobody knew it was going to be Amazon, then when Amazon approached the planning commission and said they wanted to construct a facility and provided plans and so forth, necessities, things that would require changes from you people, I would imagine that was reviewed by the planning commission, or at least I would hope so. If it was, why do we end up with a light now that does not allow a roadway for future expansion, which was approved four or five years ago? Why do we end up with a light now that won't connect or will not permit for a road to connect? We have to now go back and change that road after arguing it or after discussing it, by mistake, after discussing it before with the planning commission and it was decided where that road would be? And the people that have homes in that area, like my bride and I, we enjoyed seeing wildlife in the backyard, to hear the turkeys and so forth, as other people have talked about. We've conceded that, and we understand that we're going to watch a different kind of wildlife because of commercial, which I'm sure you're all aware of, things like cups, paper, packing material, things like opossums and maybe other wildlife that's not healthy or not something we enjoy watching. So we've already conceded that. The people in that subdivision were promised that this was going to be the road that was going to access, again, an area where nobody knows what the occupancy is going to be. But we were told that that was going to be the road. Now, they're going to move that road, and again, this is an approximate coming from the meeting last night, of about 400 feet closer to our property. Now, there's definite difference with 400 feet. And, which none of us know, again, if a hub like UPS, FedEx, something like that goes into that larger area that this road accesses, we could be talking about truck traffic that would go back and forth over that road seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Again, that road now is being proposed that it be moved 400 foot closer to our property line. And I think if all of you think about your situations with families and so forth, I think it's a pretty good bet that you would rather have a proposed road where, again, nobody knows what's going back there. I'm sure you wouldn't much rather have a road with diesel and gas trucks, traffic, again, 400 foot away from your property. And that's what I was here to bring before you. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. You'd like to be next.
Hello, my name is Eric Funk. I live at 213 Tenbee. I also own 110 Tenbee, property I bought for my parents to move into the same neighborhood that I live in. I want to thank you for taking into account the fact that we don't want the road opened up to connect to that adjoining road. I think that was pretty unanimous. When you look at the pictures, when they move the road closer, I believe that puts it approximately 65 feet off the back of our property line. If you even take a bigger picture of what that looks like, and there's none here tonight, that wraps around the back of our properties as well and backs up to not only our neighborhood, but one or two subdivisions further south of us. If that's open to the type of traffic where they mentioned something like a UPS or whatever coming through there 24 hours a day, I can't imagine the noise level and what it's going to do to our neighborhood. I don't know what the right answer is because it seems like the flip side of it is, by their own admission, that we could have businesses backed right up to our properties with dumpsters 25 feet off our property line. I wasn't here for the meetings. I didn't live here at the time that these were approved. But I have to question what the thought process was that went into allowing that type of rezoning right behind our homes. We all live outside of the city district. You know, we're on the south end of town, pretty much a country end of the town. We're a dead-end community where we don't have through traffic. It's very quiet out there. The whole thing's getting ripped apart. I mean, we've got a small city that was just built next to us, and now we can either have road traffic or we can have dumpsters in the back of buildings right behind our homes. I don't know what changes you can do to try to salvage the damage that's already been done. I don't know what vote that you're going to take that's really going to be able to help us that much, but I want you to really consider what's happening to a neighborhood there of about 175 homes and also the two subdivisions next to us. I don't know if they were really notified about the meeting or not, but if you look at some of the other drawings, I believe the very first drawing that they have before they changed the way the road was laid out, this one here where it wraps down through, there's subdivisions right back in here that are also going to be affected by that. So I appreciate you taking the time, listening to us. I really don't know what the right answer is. Either way, it doesn't look good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I appreciate you letting me come before you. My name is David Hilton. I live at 120. I own a court in Magnolia Trace. I guess I wasn't at the planned neighborhood meeting. I did not get a notice except for the one that I received in the mail for the meeting tonight, so I don't know how, did not receive that. But to address the gentleman's concern, four years ago, the development, I believe, depending on your property and where you're located, there was a different buffer zone depending on how far you were from the property. Mr. Aitlott shaking his head. I just wanted to make sure I heard Mr. Huddleston say that all the buffers and everything will stay the same, the building type, the materials and everything. I do appreciate not putting an interest in the back. That's a plus and a minus. Of course, you know, I'd love to get out faster, but I do believe for children's sake and also for less crime would occur. Do appreciate your time. Just want to make sure all the buffers and everything stays in accordance. I can understand their concern about the road moving closer, but I live in the back, so I guess what I'm more concerned about is those buffers staying the same.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is James Newman. I live at 221 Ramsey Road, Magnolia Trace. I was not at the meeting on Monday, but I just wanted to say, since I've sat here this long and heard the results of it, that I would go ahead and give my support in not wanting to connect Tenbee to this road. So thank you for making that proposal and agreeing with it.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Hi, my name's Jeff Janette. I live at 306 Fieldstone Drive in Magnolia Trace. I would also like to say thank you for not connecting through Tenbee and letting us at least keep our neighborhood as kind of a cul-de-sac and not a thoroughfare. I'm going to agree with the gentleman before. I don't see any good outcome here, having that road go through there, whether it's, whether these people on Prairie View end up with the road right up against their house or the back of the buildings up against their house. How this ever got to be this way, I don't know. I was here four years ago, protested the change in the zoning, and it went through. And for these people even to have to make a choice, it's like, which snake do you want in your sleeping bag? It's not a good choice for them to have to make, but I'm not here to, I'm not going to weigh in on that because they're a little closer to it than I am. I'm a few hundred feet further away, so whatever the neighborhood people who actually back up to it, I think those are the ones you should probably be listening to. I'm actually here to ask a question. The original road plan, as it's drawn out in the drawing that you have, goes into the bottom part of this parcel, the large 150-acre part. It goes well down into it. The amended road plan stops in a cul-de-sac right at the very top of that 150 acres, going no further. And we all know that that's going to be developed and that the road is going to have to extend down there. They're not going to make it a game preserve. What I want to know is, I'm curious why they stopped the road there in the second proposal? And I also want to know if and when they decide, if this is the plan that goes through, the road changed and moves over closer to the people's houses, will they have to come back here like they're doing now and request a zoning variance or whatever this is called to extend the road into the bottom 150 acres of that property? That's my question.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Janette. Anybody else?
Hello, I am Dana Bryson. I am 117 Prairie View Drive, so I'll be very, very close to this. I am representing myself and my husband, who cannot be here tonight because of work. I'm a gentleman, maybe two people back. You know, we are in a hard spot. I don't really see a really great answer. I just moved into the neighborhood. I do know that when I was going through the neighborhood to purchase it and to get a fence permit, I asked if there was anything, you know, happening with the property before I purchased it, and I was not aware of any of this. So that saddens me a little that I went to the planning commission and was not notified. Now, maybe I didn't ask the right question, but aside from that, I and my husband discussed it last night, and we understand that y'all are going to make a decision. And if you guys do decide to go with moving the road, we had, of course, we had wanted the extra trees in the berm, so we appreciate that. We also wanted the streetlights to point away because, I mean, that's my backyard. I don't want lights streaming in. We moved to that neighborhood from the Kason Lane area, so I wanted to get away, as far away from lights as possible. If there's any way to guarantee that those lights are the, you know, the least intrusive if possible, that would be wanted. Also, we were concerned about the speed limit on the road. I know that if it does, regardless of what side of the road, side of the field it's on, the speed limit will increase sound. If, since it is for industry, we can assume there's going to be trucks, big trucks. So I would ask you guys to consider a slow-speed limit. Let's see here. Other suggestions perhaps is to extend the buffer anymore, you know, if they're willing to make it further, if that's how you guys go with having to move the road. I would like you to really consider the homeowners of that street and my appraisal value, maybe if I move, you know? And I know that there's several people on our street that were so disheartened by this that they were considering moving. And that hurts our neighborhood because it's established, and I wouldn't want any of my neighbors to have to move. Let's see. I also agree with the Tenbee decision. I do not want that. That's four houses down from mine, and my husband and I are planning to start a family soon. I don't want little kids running down to where there's big trucks that might sneak out or shift changes for Amazon or any other company. I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryson. Last call. Hearing is closed. Mr. Aitlott, do you have comments and some questions to answer?
I'm going to try them. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to answer all of them. Mr. Fritz asked a question about, when did we know about Amazon? I'm going to tell you, that was the fastest-moving project I've ever seen. About one year ago was the first time I began to know, well, I began to see something in the newspaper in the summer about tax abatements with the Rutherford County, with the Rutherford County Commission. And that was reported in the newspaper. And what I knew by then was what I was seeing in the newspaper. That was about last summer, in the middle of the summer. And it was not when this property was originally zoned planned industrial development. I did not have any earthly idea that Amazon or anything as large as Amazon was going to come. And in fact, it didn't locate on the property that was rezoned. It was located on property that was already been there. The possibility already existed for the Amazon. And then about, they called it Project Tango, and we began to hear about Project Tango. And then in October of last year, and I remember it well because we had a very significant staff change right at that very time, and we were faced with a meeting, the development team, and they would not tell us who they were, but they began to tell us what they were. And that was been in October of 2011. And they began construction in 2011 at Christmas time, and they just opened up. So that was, I will absolutely tell you, I never had any earthly idea who it was until sometime in the fall of 2011. And I don't think any other city officials did. If they did, they never let on to me, best kept secret I've ever seen, if it was. So that's, I want Mr. Fritz to know, no, I did not know about it back at the time we went to this rezoning. I absolutely did not, regardless of what may be the impression about this. Now, about the roads that went with Amazon, Amazon's a whole lot bigger than Joseph Aitlott, and it's a whole lot bigger than any of us. And when it came, it came hard, it came fast, and it came with studies. It came with a whole host of technical experts and reviews, and a lot of this went into the hands of the city engineer to build and to design. And I'm going to tell you one thing about the Amazon that I think that we, in a couple of years, people will reflect on, it was a game changer. Whatever we thought was going to happen on Joby Jackson Parkway, it was not, Amazon is not what we thought it was going to be, and not what I thought it was going to be. It's a game changer. And the experts that deal with traffic took a really hard look at traffic management on Joby Jackson Parkway because of what it means to the large part of our community that uses and will use Joby Jackson Parkway. They looked at the placement of traffic signals where they will work best, looking at ways to manage the truck traffic, but the employment traffic and the pass-through traffic so near that interchange. We're doing that more and more. You hear us talk about traffic with virtually every plan that comes forward, but we took a really hard look. And I don't think that, I don't think that the planning commission really saw it to the depth that I did. And certainly, the public does not know the depth of what we looked. But what we looked at was having to place certain places with signals and make sure that the traffic around it is managed with those signals. And that was all done in a framework of, we've got to be responsive, we've got to move forward quickly. And frankly, Richard Reeves Drive was nailed down before I ever had a chance to say, wait a minute, we've got to go back and amend the zoning plan for the Parkway Partners. I knew that at some point that I was going to have to do that in some form or fashion. I didn't know to what magnitude because it became very important that this 150 acres or so that's in Parkway Partners' property had to have access to the signalized intersection rather than an offset intersection. So I knew in my mind that there's something that had to happen. I didn't know when and what until it happened. Combine that with the Parkway Partners losing the property and going back to the bank, there's no one really for me to talk to about a zoning application. So it came, and Mr. Fritz, that's the honest gosh for you. I told you the other night, I knew something was going to be done, and I'm not sure just when I realized it had to be done. But I do know that when Mr. Hardy came into my office to talk about his plan, I knew it had to be done then, and I knew we needed to have a neighborhood meeting, and I knew that we had to face the issue. And there was no backing up.
Was that a week ago?
No, sir. That was about a month ago.
We were notified about a week ago.
Yes, sir. I know our notification process would have been about a week ago, but we knew about it before October 19th because... October 19th because, excuse me, September 19th, because we had it at a work session with the planning commission. And the planning commission too was saying, you didn't have a work session, a neighborhood meeting. So it was probably in the last part of, the very last part of August, I became aware of it, because that's when Mr. Harney came to me. And now we're here, so this time.
And I understand this is Kate.
Okay, we, we, we're out of order, I'm sorry. Mr. Adelot, will you proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. And we'll continue our discussion, so, in another time, please. So that's what we've got there. And now, what we're faced with now is, Mr. Harney and his client, the bank, want to cut across the property and catch the, as much property on the west side of the road as they can. Possibility of seeing expansion of the, of the Amazon parking lot is one possibility. They mentioned the other night. They don't know if that's going to happen or not, but they do, they want to be prepared. The projections are, Amazon's beefing up their employment faster and more robust than the original commitments they made with the county on their tax abatement, which is a very positive thing for Rutherford County as a whole. So they want to be prepared for that. Also, they do want to have a good alignment in the road. At some point, if Ms. Eli, if you can help us to get that map back up that shows the proposed alignment, whether it has to go all the way across the track to the eastern side, or it could be some point in the middle, is really a matter of engineering. But it can't, it can't, right there at the property line, it can't hug the, the western property line of the track.
Cable Department, will you go ahead and put the map up?
There goes, see how, and that would be from the left side of the map as you're looking at it, it cuts across the track all the way over to the right side. Now, somewhere in the first 200 feet or so of that crossing, they could probably succeed with the curve, but when they do that, what they've done is they've cut the track and they've destroyed some of the appeal of having a contiguous tract. So they're wanting to go all the way across. It may be possible that it could be something less from a possibility, but from a usability standpoint, they're telling us that they prefer not to do that. Now, that's sort of the why of what they're requesting. And I'll let them advocate for themselves on it. I'm just wanting the answer to the why and what they've told me. Now, I want to address some other things that came up. Mr., well, I'm not sure what your name was, but you asked, would the, all of the commitments in the zoning plan remain the same? And yes, that was a program book. I did not bring my copy of the whole thing, but it was divided into like four regions, and each region had different kind of land uses, different building heights, different setback requirements, the architectural reviews. All of that remains intact. None of that's changed. Some of that may even involve the placement of things like the, I think we call them the unsidely essentials. You can't change that. All the buffers along the south side of Magnolia Trace, all over there behind the other large subdivision, Clearwater, Co-Stream.
Co-Stream, Oakland.
All that's remained exactly the same. Nothing's changed. Now, about why they are ending the plan with a cul-de-sac right there at Magnolia Trace, I think they're hoping to see one user for the whole thing. And that's, that'd be great from my standpoint. It would maybe a campus. I don't think it'd be one large building. It'd probably be a campus. I don't know. I really do not know. I have heard rumors of 750,000 square foot buildings, and all I can say is, those are rumors. They have not been confirmed by any credible source, nor has anybody come to me to talk about that type of building on that property. But there have been the casual things like, I guess, Mr. The gentleman talked about it, barber shop talk. I've heard some of that myself, but barber shop talk is barber shop talk. So I don't know what's being pursued there. But I do know it could be an industrial use, but it is still going to have to meet those guidelines that we've got approved. Now, when we approved that plan, we looked at the main road, and the focus of the attention was the location of the road coming off of Joby Jackson and down the west side of Magnolia Trace. From there, the plan was very specific. There may be other roads built, but if there are other roads built, the region lines that divides the uses will remain the same, regardless of where the roads may be moved to or the additional roads that may be built. And the region lines to explain, some of the property backs up to I-24, and it was viewed as to be a little bit more heavy industrial than the uses that backed up the Magnolia Trace. And they're a little bit lighter industrial, and more attention to the architecture. So that will remain the same, even if there are, because it was viewed that there might be smaller lots cut into that property, and there might need to be roads within that area. So I really would like for Mr. Huddleston to maybe answer about the idea, is it your expectation that you would need to come back to the planning commission to amend your plan if you chose to extend that street, or not? Because right now, I'm not clear what your expectation is, but you did provide an exhibit to me that shows it ending in a cul-de-sac, and I think these people would really deserve an answer to know, what are they here to expect?
It's a good question. You know, we don't have anybody particularly in mind for the property. There have been some inquiries. Our reason for just showing it like it's shown now is that we know it's going to go that far as a public road. What would be a good scenario, as Mr. Adelot touched on, is if we did get a big user that wanted to develop the whole back part, either with one building or as a campus. And in that case, the public road would stop where we show it, and the rest would be private drives into parking lots and that sort of thing. So we're showing it stop where it is right now, because we know we're going that far, and we don't know if we'll be going any further. If we get a big user with a lot of jobs coming in, we won't have to.
So what's your expectation about, if you want to extend the road in the future, is it that you will be coming back, or not?
If we need to extend the public right of way in the future, we can come back if that's your desire.
All right. Well, I think that, I think we need to do something so we can answer that with certainty about what your expectations are, so we know we're approving. I want the planning commission, when they take a vote, they know what they're approving and can repeat it back to the people who might ask them, what did you vote on? So I think if you want to have an amendment in the future on that point, that'd be fine.
That's fine with us all.
All right. So the gentleman who asked about that question, the answer now is his expectation, and what I expect the planning commission is going to vote on is, that if they want to extend that cul-de-sac beyond where it is shown on their revised exhibit, it will come back as a planned amendment, and everybody have a chance to look into it.
Richard Reeves' drive would be a public road. The speed limits on public roads are set by the city of Murfreesboro through the traffic department?
That is correct. Our transportation department will set the speed limits, and it's based upon a variety of circumstances. Typically, a local street such as this would have a 35 mile per hour speed limit, but it may be different based upon how it's actually built. And it's something that he has the authority, the city's traffic engineer has the authority to establish. And we won't be putting speed bumps on it. That's something we can't do. The lady that spoke, talked about her fence. When she went to the planning commission, I don't think she came to our office to get a permit because you're in the county, so you wouldn't have come to our planning office. It may have been that you went to the planning commissioner or planning staff that really had no knowledge about it, and for that, it's maybe regrettable that they didn't, and you may have, had you asked, they may not have anything to have been able to tell you. I think that's most of the questions. Were there anything else that you wanted me to maybe address on this?
No, I don't think so. I think you covered them pretty well. Any questions from Mr. Adelot or Mr. Huddleston?
I think there was one small technical error. There is a change. The berm's getting bigger instead of smaller.
Yes, there is getting to be a larger berm. And let me offer some insights on that. You know, the best buffer is distance. Absolutely is. The best buffer is distance. The second-best buffer, if you can't have distance, is often a berm. A six-foot berm has the ability to deflect noise, it has the ability to allow vegetation to grow on it, so if it's installed at six-foot or eight-foot, it's immediately 12-foot high at the very top. I was over behind the Innsbruck Krogers earlier this week, looking at the back of it, and I was very much impressed at that berm, and it's only about, what, a three-foot berm, with, it has evergreens on the base height as that wall now. And it created a very impressive buffer, particularly from the Kroger side, looking at it. Now, I wasn't in the people's backyard on the other side, but I was particularly impressed with that. And that's the kind of thing I want to see achieved with here. I think it can be done. A similar thing with the berm behind the Georgetown Krogers, and it's actually bigger. It's more like the size of this berm, and it had pines on it, and for many years, it was a very excellent buffer behind Georgetown, some very nice homes over there.
Still is. Any other questions or comments before I ask for a motion? If not, we're ready for a motion.
I got a comment, Mr. Lamb.
Yes, sir.
If I may. One of the gentlemen said, you know, which snake do you want in your sleeping bag? I thought that was, you know, hit home a little bit. But, you know, they say everything is personal, and I agree with that. If I lived on Prairie View, I would rather have the road closer to my house than I would looking at the back of a building. And that's just one man's opinion. But I think that the neighborhood is going to get more protection with the road closer and the berm than they would if the road was, is it 400 feet over?
About 400.
About 400 feet, and a building between the road and their subdivision. That's just one way I look at it.
There's no other comments, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve. Subject to all staff comments.
Thank you. Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Standing.
Got two abstentions, Mrs. Jones and Mr. Halliburton. Item E has been withdrawn from the agenda tonight. We'll move on to item F, the final public hearing. That's amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding land use intensity ratio for multifamily developments. The planning staff is the applicant. Mr. Adelot or Ms. Eli?
Thank you. Our final public hearing this evening is to consider some possible amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding land use intensity ratios for multifamily develops in Murfreesboro. During our work session last month on September 19th, the planning staff brought to you the idea of changing the zoning ordinance to eliminate the land use intensity ratio for multifamily developments. And this was prompted from a conversation we had with a developer in City of Murfreesboro who indicated that although he would not exceed the density permitted in the RM16 district, and that he would exceed all landscaping, parking standards, and stormwater requirements, he wasn't able to meet the land use intensity ratio. And that actually gave, or initiated staff to think about that, and think about what the solution should be and how effective those land use intensity ratios are for the floor area ratio, open space ratio, and livability space ratio. And we abbreviate them as the floor area ratio, FAR, open space ratio, OSR, and livability space ratio, LSR. We've included in your staff comments definitions of several of these items because I know that the terms can be kind of, and I don't want to, I can't think of a better word than obscure, but something that maybe you're not familiar with. And looking at the history of these requirements, they were adopted in 1984 with our comprehensive zoning ordinance adoption, which is a brand-new zoning ordinance. And I think the staff believes since that time, there have been several changes made to our zoning ordinance, which would affect the open space or the livability space on properties, such as we adopted our landscape ordinance in the 90s. We also adopted some more strict parking standards. And now we have our stormwater management plan, which requires some additional open space so that the quality and quantity of water can be managed on site. So because of these additional standards, it may be that the land use intensity ratios are sort of antiquated and don't apply or accomplish the goals that they did in 1984. So Mr. Adelot drafted actually the proposed ordinance, which you have in your agenda materials, and really, it would eliminate those requirements. So our zoning ordinance requires landscaping, that it didn't in 84, and it requires some additional parking, that it did not in 84. It also requires open space for the stormwater management. And so with those additional requirements, we believe that this wouldn't negatively affect development in Murfreesboro. So after our discussion at work session, Mr. Adelot did draft these amendments, and they're being presented to you tonight for your discussion and for you to contemplate. You should conduct a public hearing, though, before you make any sort of recommendation on these zoning ordinance amendments. I don't know if you have any additional comments to add at this time, Mr. Adelot?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So if you want to go ahead and open the public hearing, we'll be glad to answer questions afterwards.
Any questions? In case, I'll open the public hearing and ask everybody to come forward one at a time to comment on this proposal.
Please state your name. Chairman Lamb, I'm Bill Huddleston, and members of the planning commission with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I just wanted to say that these ratios are really outdated, given our drainage requirements, our parking requirements, and our landscaping requirements now. That's what dictates the open space, and we're able to design better sites without these ratios, given the new rules that we're, I call them new, we've been operating under them for some time now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huddleston. Anybody else? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion. Mr. Adelot, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
Only that I think that this, these amendments will actually improve and get some flexibility, but will not cause us to lose open space at all.
If we have Mr. Huddleston's endorsement and yours, I can't see where we can go wrong.
Mr. Lamb, Mr. Adelot, in our study to doing this, we looked at what other communities did across the country.
Yes, we did. I found it rather amusing. It seems like these stormwater regulations are affecting everybody. Some planners are very frustrated with them and said that they wish that they could get rid of the ones they've got, but they just hadn't figured out a way to get it before their planning commission. Some of them said they don't really understand them, and they rely on someone else to figure them out, and they figure they're being done wrong, but they don't understand them well enough to know what they're doing. So there was a variety of actions, and some communities just don't have them at all, just don't have them already. So it was kind of amusing to me because some, it took a little bit of urging to get a real frank discussion from some of my contemporaries, because they didn't want to, they didn't want to look like they were not enlightened, I guess, is the way to say it.
The answer I wanted was, yes, they are antiquated, and we've looked at what other communities are doing around the country, and we're making corrections.
And yes, we are, and it would be consistent what a lot of the communities are doing.
The information you collected was quite interesting, though.
Yes, it is.
You did a good job on that.
You're right.
All that being said, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. No abstentions this time. Mr. Adelot, any other business?
Yes, sir. One small item. If you have not got your training, and most of you either have or are on the verge of it, and if you hadn't finished the training, give them Mr. Lewis. And remember, we do offer a once-a-month land use teleconference, and we provide a very nutritious, although very unappealing, box lunch, and your choice of beverages, including water. If you will attend for one hour to get your, whatever, one hour per month to get your training. Most of you, some of, most of you have got it or are on the verge, but if you haven't, please get with us. We want to be in good order on our Chapter 862.
I think you're about in pretty good shape from the list that I saw, but there are things. No other business, we stand adjourned.